Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Westminster Select Board for Wednesday, July 28, 2021, 6:30 PM to order. And first meeting is I'd like to welcome the all the members of the Westminster Prudential Committee for a joint financial discussion with the Westminster Select Board. So, welcome everybody. And but let's get right to it. Who wants to start?
I'll start. So, we're coming before you today to seek to kind of solve for an issue that we found in applying for grants. So, we are looking to apply for a grant which the application will be due in October. And one of the things that's important is to show how funds are allocated to the fire district. And so, our traditional model has been we have raised and appropriated money through taxation. So, we have a tax rate and people, you know, make their tax payments and that suffices for a budget. What we found is there's hold harmless and there's pilot money. It is paid by the state for state-owned properties, properties that are in current use. And what the state does is they give the town the money based on what their tax rate is. So, we have the town tax rate and we have the fire district tax rate. Both of those tax rates roll up to what taxpayers pay and that's what the state bases their payment on. In prior years, their payments have been made, they've come directly to the town, it's all lumped together. That goes into the town's general budget, Russ, you all budget for that, you expect that you're going to get it. A portion of that money is due to the district. So, what we're looking to do is make sure that that gets changed. And in talking to Russ about it, I think that there was a thought process that we could reduce the tax payment that goes to the district. And I think it was the second tax payment, if I recall.
It would be actually the first one because we don't get the payment until November.
Okay. So, it would be the first tax payment would be reduced payment to the district based on the allocation of that hold harmless and that pilot money that is to move over. I want to make sure that the Select Board dots its i's and crosses its t's and make sure that you know that you're able to do that. When we go to town meeting, we have an article and we are raising and appropriating $277,727 or whatever the figure was. And that's what the voters have approved. So, I want to make sure that it's within your discretion to reduce our tax payment based on the allocation of this other money coming over. And if it is, that's fine, but I'd like the Prudential Committee to have verification of that. And if that is the case, then I think we should move forward with our plan, which we've discussed and I've just outlined. And that will satisfy our needs to be able to show that this hold harmless and pilot money is coming in from the state, which is a separate income source from taxation, which strengthens our application. And also, the federal government is the one that gives the state the money, I believe, for those programs. And if we're applying for funds from them, they may have a way to check to make sure that we are accounting for the funds that are due to us. And I feel like this satisfies all the needs and we can move forward. That's for Russ.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, or any questions?
Yeah, good point. Any questions from the Select Board for Katie Dearborn?
So, this is a new grant system then. So, in the past, you have not had to account for?
So, I don't, I don't have a whole lot of history with obviously seeking grants for the fire district. But what I will say is any grant application that you submit that has multiple sources of income that aren't coming from the same source oftentimes would strengthen your point system for being awarded that grant. So, no, it may not have been something that was discovered in the past and impacted. It may have been an impact if we didn't show that we were getting that allocation. We have a community member that has stepped up and is helping us with grant writing and it was something that was brought, I believe, to the attention of the town last year. And it didn't go anywhere and I'm not really sure why. But when it came before me, I contacted the state, I spoke to a very nice gentleman, he sent me a very lengthy email and pretty much connected the dots for me, so.
You, this, this, in the last sentence that you just said about somebody that you spoke to, where?
In the state of Vermont. His name is Casey O'Hare.
And he is with whom?
He is with the department that does the payments for the pilot and hold harmless.
Okay.
And I'm sorry if you don't have the email, I did send it to Russ.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
To share it with you. I mean, I got my information directly from him, obviously. I don't, I had to educate myself. But with, you know, a little push from our community member that wants to help us try to secure funds, I felt like it was my due diligence that was required, so.
Because, you know, I read a lot of the information. For example, one of the responses that came to a question that we asked about this issue, not from you, but from somebody else. He saw, he saw it as, you know, you have a budget. We have our budget, you have your budget, they, you know, this. And it is being paid for by taxes. And so, so is there a problem for the, for the, for your organization or part of it with raising your budget and getting enough money for your budget?
So, I want to take a few steps back for you because I think you're alluding to the fact that we're getting additional funds and we're not.
No, I, I, I'm just asking if what you want is to get additional funds?
No, no. So, we are doing a level funded budget, just like we always have. If we get the pilot and the hold harmless money, we're going to have a reduced contribution of our taxes from the town by the exact same amount of money that we get from the hold harmless and the pilot money. So, net-net, it's going to be the exact same, the $277,727, which is the exact amount of our expenses. So, there's no money that we're gaining because really, in all reality, taxpayers are the ones paying both budget. It's just the allocation showing that we are capturing the appropriate accounting for the money that the state is paying us. And it has been going on to the town line item and needs to shift over to the district.
Why, why does it need to shift over?
Because that's the intended purpose from the state is that they're paying us our tax rate as a payment in lieu of taxes on state-owned property. That's what the state does. They take a tax rate and they say, and since you're not collecting from this taxpayer, because we own the property, we're going to give you the tax money. And so, they look at your tax rate and they say, this is how much money you're going to get. We are a separate entity from the town, so our tax rate is separate, although we do roll it up together. So, really, when they send that check, their intention is 13% of the check that's received is going to go to the district and that the remaining portion is going to stay to the town. And that's why Casey gave me this information. He clearly says the fire district makes up 13.17% of that money. And so, here's what you need to do. He was super helpful. He, it's based on the grant list, he gave me the calculation. I feel like I'm at the end of understanding it. I don't know if there's too much more wiggle room for me to not feel that it's pretty black and white.
So, Russ, adding in the documentation from Chad Hewitt of October 30th, is this the issue to make sure at the time when our auditor sent this providence that we were following procedure according to how towns follow it?
That's correct.
Okay.
He had never seen this before.
All right. So, is that in conflict with what Katie just said?
We, I had a lengthy conversation with him today because he's doing our audit and he, he sees no problem with doing the solution that we have talked with so that they can show that they're receiving it and the town can, can do it. One thing he did say for next year, you might want to actually apply for the allocation directly from the state. Then there's no interpretation of.
Okay. Which is really up to the treasurer through the grant. It goes through the grant list. So, when you give the grant list to the state, they get it. They're not going to change their formula. They're going to issue one check. And that was my conversation with Casey.
So, he's not willing to send you a?
There's not a separate check that goes out. It's always done this way. Your grant list goes up, it breaks it out, the grant list is right here. It clearly shows what happens. It's a NIMR function that needs to occur. And so, we need to make sure that it happens. And now Chad is aware of it. If it doesn't happen, Chad will pick it up because I had a conversation with him today.
Any other questions of Katie from board?
I guess my only question would be Chad back on the 30th tried to explain it was, I didn't understand what he was saying.
So, let me provide a little clarity. Most towns do not have a separate fire district. They have a fire department. Okay? So, it's all one. We are very unique in the sense that we have our own district, we are our own entity, we have our own tax rate. We have an article that says taxpayers, will you approve this? Chad could not give me any example of any other town that he works with that is set up the way that we are. So, his lack of knowledge is not surprising because he doesn't have any example of it. The guy from the state was pretty crystal clear. And I think that the state is giving us the money and I think it would be foolish to not follow what the state is advising, which is that we get the 13.17% of the pilot money. I just, I don't know why we would question the person that's writing us the check in and running that program over an audit.
Obviously, he had to change since he wrote this because he wrote this, he couldn't figure out why he would be doing it. But the end result is the taxpayer, the investment minister could actually not have a tax increase but yet end up with more funds available to run their department.
No. That is not correct.
Ones, no, ones, yeah. So, it gets to ask who's going to issue that.
You want to, Mr. Jones, please.
Director, I'll fill the record. So, what Ms. Dearborn is saying is correct us one way to approach this. Other way for both minutes of time to approach it is you get the money, you set your rate, you get the money, owe that, disburse it. Then the next year, when come the taxpayers, you can say, we received this much. You either want to reduce the taxes, net-net it, or you want to use it for other things, equipment, et cetera. So, that's one way that it was explained to me by the same gentleman, Mr. O'Hare. So, that's to Mr. Allen's point that you could, you could approach that way if you chose to do so. You just got to know what you get for money. And these funds could go away. Just be mindful if you set your budget on it and the state says we don't have money, they could go away. So, just be mindful.
So, I think just to provide a little bit of articulation and clarity, if we want to set our budget and we want to ask the taxpayers to fully fund our budget, knowing that we're entitled to this money, we could do that. We're not looking to do that. We're not looking for extra money. We could do that and then do exactly what he said. If we got it, the next year, go to the taxpayers and say, oh, we don't need all the money for our budget because we've got $20,000 sitting over here, we only need 252,000. That's not how we want to do it. We want to just level fund our budget. We will budget a little bit high in case we don't get the pilot money and we will follow our budget through the year and we'll make sure that we have a cushion. And if we end up having that cushion, then it will go into our capital reserve. And we're prepared to go to the taxpayers to say, listen, here's our budget. We believe that we're going to get the pilot money, which means we're not going to end up spending all of our budget, but we need to make sure that we get it. If we get it, we'll give you back this money the next year. So, it's, we're not looking to increase what we're getting from taxpayers.
I didn't say that.
Yeah. I just, I, what, what he's saying is we could look at it that way and that's not how this Prudential Committee decided we wanted to look at it.
That's both forced progression to do, however you choose, it's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, I just.
Because you guys budget based on receiving the funds, which is a little bit risky, right?
Absolutely.
But let's face it, and I'm going to say this and I've said it probably at every meeting, we have a ridiculous general fund balance at the end of every year for this town. It's not going to hit us to an extent where we wouldn't end up with money in the bank because we don't spend our budget line items. We don't. I mean, there's money every year at the end. We spend our money, so we can't play like the way the town does. We're going to be much more closely watching it, which we have the ability to do because we have far less accounts than the town has in the general ledger.
Thank you. Jason?
I think it sounds like them.
Selecting the board?
I still, I just have one question. Since basically what you're, I understand what you're saying, most of it, but you'll just forgive me.
Yeah, you're fine.
I, I don't see what we, why we have to do this.
Because it will strengthen our grant application when we apply. And when you're signing a grant application and you are certifying the financials, it's important.
No, when you say, what you just did, when you, when would you be applying for something?
We have an application that is going in in October.
For?
Various equipment for the fire district.
Okay. And that is not in your budget?
Uh-uh. That is, there's money available to us, we can apply for a grant, we may or may not get it. But in our application process, to be able to certify financials and say that our financials reflect the money that we've received, if the federal government is giving the state money that is coming to us and we don't have anything written that shows that, we'd look pretty silly if they called us out on it to say, but we give you hold harmless and pilot money from the state, we're going to be allocating for this. Those financials aren't accurate. The money's coming to the town with the intention of going to the district and we don't have financials that support that. So, we're not looking for any monetary gain. We are looking for simply an accounting entry that will allow us to have financials that are actually accurate based on what the state is doing.
And Ms. Casey, I is the one that?
That I reached out to and had a 45-minute conversation one afternoon and had him explain to me so that I can articulate it to you and understand it.
Well, you're articulating very well.
Yeah, I just, I, it's complicated, I understand. I just, it, you know, I'm, I'm, it's too bad it didn't happen last year, to be honest. That's all.
Well, no, no, and I, we appreciate it, but, you know, we, just so everyone here knows, we have to respond to our CPA, which is Chad Hewitt. On October 30th, he said specifically as he opened, "I audit many municipalities and I have never, or a town would give either current use money or pilot money to a fire district. I am not saying that it doesn't happen, but in my 28 years, I have never seen it happen." And from what I understand, there was correspondence with Chris Hackett and that that was acknowledged and not objected to. So, I'm speaking for myself as a citizen. There's nothing I want more, forget being sitting on a board here, than to make sure that you folks who do the most important thing in this, one of the most important things in this town, have exactly what you need. I just want the record to be clear that, you know, this is our auditor, this is how he analyzes this particular situation. And whatever you can do to get it to where you think you're going to get us or get you quicker, faster and more money, then let us proceed. I would argue that we proceed to do that and just make sure we're doing it in accordance with the way we're supposed to do it.
So, I talked to Chad this afternoon and he is completely content and understanding with the information that I gathered from the state and talking to him about it. So, I, I think where we're at is you guys can have another conversation with Chad so that you're comfortable, he's comfortable, everyone's comfortable. And then I would like for the Select Board to provide us with documentation that indicates that the tax payment to us, or that first payment, can be reduced by the amount that is paid through the hold harmless and pilot money so that we know that we're not doing something that we're not supposed to be doing since we actually are the ones to ask the taxpayers for the money. So, that would be my only.
Would you, October, that's your grant deadline?
Yeah. So, we're looking to have a meeting in August to just finalize our grant application. You know, totally working to just come up with a finalized list of what we're looking for, how much money. It would just be nice to kind of have this, you know, laid to rest before, you know, September, if possible.
And you need to buy the, I'm sorry, sir.
No, it's all right.
And you need to buy that particular?
I would like it by September. If we have an application going in in October, I would like to know that all of it's happening. First tax payment is also going to be coming in. We're going to be getting the hold harmless money shortly after that, I think, Russ?
I'm sorry.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. Hold harmless and pilot money comes in in October?
November.
November. So, it would be a little bit before it came in, it would be timing.
Can we get her what she needs and you think?
We can get the letter to you so that you can attach it to the, to the grant. No problem, doesn't have to wait till September, well, it's fresh in our minds, if they agree to it. And then as soon as we know the final amount, which we won't know until the check hits the portal for the town, then we do the math and I will call you and a couple of us work it out.
Come up with our number and?
Yeah. We agree on it, we send you a check in, you know, the second week in November and all good.
And we're all in agreement? And that way, there's no consternation because it's been going forward.
Just for clarification, who do you think's going to provide you with the documentation that says that it's within your purview to reduce the tax payment? You have any idea?
Say it again?
Who, I would like documentation for the Prudential Committee to be assured that the reduction in the tax payment is acceptable within the leagues of city and towns, whoever kind of has jurisdiction.
This year, you're going to get your full amount because you, you didn't have anything to do with my estimate of what went into that budget. So, it is $857 less than what I was expecting. When the final number comes in, that could be made up or it could be less than. It's a crap shoot. You flip your coin and you hope it to come out. You guys will get your full amount this year.
Our full tax payment.
Your full $277,230 that you've got budget.
So, this is going to be for the next year, then, the reduction? When we're talking about the money moving over and coming in and you're reducing our tax payment, when is that reduction occurring? I thought it was the first tax installment that you said.
It is, in September.
So, what I'm saying is if you're going to reduce our taxes, payment to us?
Just your payment, yeah.
I would like to have verification that you have the autonomy to do that because we went to town meeting and asked the taxpayers to give us X number of dollars. I don't know that we can just arbitrarily be like, oh, we don't need it all. And I would like verification so that we know that the way that we're solving for this is acceptable and that I'm not going to have some taxpayer come up to me and say, that's not okay. Like, we told you we were going to give you $277,000. Why is Russ all of a sudden reducing that? It just, I would much prefer to have some.
So, if we do it the way we've talked, you get a payment in September, you get a payment in November, and you get a payment in February. So, that way, you've got record of all three, which would equal your bottom line. There will be no deduction, no matter what the state does, because that again is not fair because it was my calculation. So, you'll have three checks. That way, you can monitor.
And out of those three checks, some of the money is going to be coming from the hold harmless and pilot money and some are coming from taxes. So, I want to know that tax payment that normally would come to us, how much is it being, it'll be reduced by the amount of the hold harmless and pilot money. And I just don't know, you're not paying us through taxation, you're paying us by way of the income coming from the state and then reducing the amount of taxation.
Let's just say that nobody paid.
Is there anybody following?
If nobody paid in, in September, you still get your half of a payment, no matter what, along with the school.
I guess I'm not.
The school is the only, the town is the only one that's on the law. So, I will definitely, with their blessing, go to legal counsel and say, hey, make sure that this is.
We're going to reduce the tax payment to the district based on the amount of hold harmless money that's coming over. That's the only question I have.
Yeah.
And I just, yeah.
Greg?
Question, Katie. Chad doesn't do every town in the state and I'm just questioning, have you got a hold of state and said, can you give us an example of another city or town that does this? Because that's the only thing scary is why are we in Westminster, first one to ever do this? You know what I'm saying?
Have you been able to read the email from the gentleman from the state?
Yeah, it really is confusing a little bit and, but he is, nobody's come along and said, yeah, we do it all the time and this is where it is. My only, I'm not against it, but I'm just saying, as a town, if you say, hey, yeah, a town of Polchester does it and they did it and it works real well and this is how it works, I mean, I'll feel a little more comfortable, that's all.
I, I encouraged somebody from the board to reach, reach out to Casey because he gave me examples of other towns where this happens. And it's not always a fire district, but UVM is an example that somehow it interacts kind of the same way. I think if somebody from the board or if Russ can call Casey and have a conversation, I certainly was not in a position to question the gentleman from the state who runs the program to say, ah, this doesn't make sense to me, I need an example, I'll need to bring an example. It made sense to me, so I felt like it was pretty solid and here I am.
But having a written providence of these matters is much more substantive and gives us the ability to make sure that when, forbid, this comes up at town meeting in dispute, that we follow procedure and the procedure was backed up by written documentation from authorities that had the absolute right to provide that providence. So, we have legal counsel, we have our CPA and we have this gentleman from the state, his name again, I'm sorry.
His name is Casey O'Hare. And honestly, he, he'll explain it. I have no doubt.
Anyone else you can think of that should be involved in this process from your end?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Nope. Mr. Board covered all the people.
Okay.
So, I'll just expect some type of communication from Russ at some point between now and maybe mid-August?
September.
Yeah, what's your drop date?
I mean, I'd like, we're going to be working on our grant application to just have it kind of buttoned up and good to go at the beginning of September. So, we'll have a meeting in August and I'd like to be able to report at my meeting. It likely will be probably the third Monday in August that we'll have a meeting, so I'll try to come through before then.
Are there any other questions or concerns that we could be doing to help you to achieve whatever it is that you need to achieve that you want to address to us this evening?
The only other thing that I'll bring up is in my conversation with Chad, and I knew this prior to my conversation, but we had a Prudential Committee meeting at the end of June. We brought our bills and warrants over. It was certainly before the 30th. Unfortunately, they didn't get processed. Because they didn't get processed and we're on cash, not accruals, that means that it didn't hit our budget for last year. So, we have a general fund balance that will be carrying over. It's going to make my life absolutely miserable all year long because I'm going to have to have notations on my budget or reports from NIMR so that I know where I actually am on my budget because all the expenses for last year and the last run are going to be hitting this year. So, I am really hopeful that we can get to a point where we have a treasurer that is here a little more frequently. I love Paul, he does a great job. I know that he would love to have somebody help, Darlene's in place. I'm hopeful that we don't have to continue to have issues like this. If, if it doesn't work out this year and I'm still a part of the Prudential Committee, I will be lobbying to go from cash to accruals. When you have that situation, it's way better in these scenarios because you can backdate stuff and actually have it reported under the right fiscal year. I talked to Chad a little bit about it. He agreed with me that it's kind of a pain in the neck when this happens and that it's not a bad idea. But if you do have a treasurer that's out here more frequently, then it doesn't happen. We'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Chuck, do you have something?
I was just curious, why are we a district?
That's the way it was set up. When we went from a village fire department to.
When we went from a village fire department to a fire district in 1980, I think is when Jonathan Bump set it up so that we were a fire district. We had a Prudential Committee that runs the fire district.
So, you've got a separate governing body, is that, that's the main reason?
Yes. Well, I may not be the main reason, but that's one.
No, I know, right.
The treasurer provides our function to us and the town, you know, finance us.
Right. Where other towns, the select board would actually govern the fire department.
Yeah, it's a town department.
This way, okay.
And that's why it's so unique, I think. I don't know how many examples.
Well, yeah, it's good.
All right. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Anything comes up, we're around.
For all you do.
Yeah. Meeting's adjourned. Our meeting is.
All right.
We had to continue our meeting. We had a meeting first, this was the continual.